So moved.
I would like a second.
Second.
Pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is town council coming?
Huh?
Town council coming?
Tonight, yeah. A little later.
All right, before we get started, I probably should apologize to everyone out there right off the bat because we could be a little disorganized, but trust me, we'll get through it and the outcomes will be what they're supposed to be. So, we do have a public hearing tonight, and Eric has assured me under board and committee reports that he would be done for 7:15, and he has something very important to discuss to us for the proposed municipal building complex. Are you ready, Eric?
Uh, yes. Well, you're ready. Something.
Want me to tell a joke or you, you know, something?
Sure. I'll have to grab a point. Good evening, everybody. Eric Svan, 1404 Way, Chair of the Municipal Building Committee. I'm here to give you an update report. I look forward first and foremost to the 22nd of the month in which we have a scheduled joint meeting of the boards and committees in which to present the next recommendation on terms of facilities and the charge that we were given. So, I'm trying to make this flow here. So, we've been working on several options, the charge of a new, new, a new town hall, new police station right here on this site. We then have brought back a previous plan that the committee had worked on in which was a renovation of the town hall with an addition out back and an addition on the side for the police station. And then we've, we will update the public safety complex recommendation that we previously made so that there can be a comparison of what you get for the dollar, so to speak. Currently, the architects, CSS architects in Wakefield is updating plans and site plans. I did talk to the architect today. He did say that he would have them to me today. They don't have them just yet, but the way architects work, that means about 11:59, I'll probably get an email and get them today. So, next step is then to send them off to Fantasy Consulting, which is a third-party professional construction cost estimator, and then we will have CSS opinions of cost, my assessment of cost, and a third-party consultant's cost. I need to get that back within a week's time in order to have another week to put it together for the 22nd. So, we are running out of time in which, in which takes to put together all the information, present it, have your review, have your vote on it, and then take it and present it back to the residents. So that is one thing to think of and will be an item for discussion as the schedule moving forward from the 22nd to the three weeks that follow up until the election. We have people and other people have approached the committee in terms of getting the word out, even trying to get people to go to door-to-door just to deliver the information of what the project is about. In one step in that endeavor, a, John O'Connell had graciously deferred last time to elect the municipal building committee, put a flyer in the tax bill.
Thank you.
And basically, the flyer that you voted and approved that we could put in the tax bill by deferring John's need to put one in there, has been reviewed by town council a couple times and basically states what happened at the special ballot, the results of the Board of Selectmen meeting, and several meetings with the finance committee in terms of making a charge, current charge of a new, new facility to be repaired against the previous public safety facility. It talks about the money, the $25,000 that was authorized for architectural engineering cost estimating services, which we are using to update the recommendation. It then states simply the inefficiencies of operating and repairing existing aged facilities, unsafe facilities that are not in compliance with state or federal codes or regulations, the cost of short-term alternative facilities due to lack of space and/or condemned facilities. And then on the back, it's just a series of dates that take everybody from March 22nd up to the April 26th annual town meeting, and it lists dates for absentee ballots and registration dates. Also, the note, which is particular, that voting, voting? In May, is the voting at the Round School or is that now back to the Fire Hall?
Always going to be the Fire Hall.
Okay, I did see one thing that was in there. Sorry for the confusion, everybody, but just letting everyone know about dates and things for voting. So, you've said we could do that, and if you'd like to take another vote on whether that goes out, appreciate it, but this is draft, it's been reviewed by town council, and this is what we'd like to submit.
Eric, would you like a quick motion to accept this draft if it put?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the tax letter insert as read.
And include in the tax bill.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
And I guess the other item to bring up is that we, after the joint committee meeting and the presentation of the next recommendation, we would then hope participation by boards and committees and the Board of Selectmen and identify a date in early September, April in order to have a public meeting. September was a slip-up because that was the last Saturday meeting. We held one workshop, and I think what we're really running up against is getting the information, getting it in order, getting a concise presentation where people understand the simple facts and the detail is then, can be provided if people want to dig into it. Creating a feasibility report that's a half-inch thick, I don't think is going to help anybody that doesn't understand the project understand it any better. That's the essence of it.
Do you think, do you think we can get this done in time for spring town meeting and voting this spring?
Well, we could. There's other towns around us that have lapped us in terms of what they've done in terms of producing feasibility reports and getting to the next step. We seem to be stuck and mired in a little bit of mud.
Doesn't surprise you, does it?
Nope. Back in the day, there was a statute in the town of Newbury that men would be fined some 12 pence if they didn't show up to the monthly, or meetings of the town business in order to make them come here. We could reinstitute something like that maybe and would get people to annual town meeting. I don't know what 12 pence actually equals, but something like that could happen.
Well, it'd increase revenue.
Yeah, there we go. So, that's the report. Everybody's here that's here tonight, everybody that's watching on TV, thank you. Please show up at the 22nd, and please follow the town calendar for any postings of municipal building meetings or joint meetings. Our meetings are open, and we welcome participation from people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Any questions or concerns or?
Any questions for Eric, guys?
Godspeed.
Just once again, thanks for everything that you've put in towards it. I know there's many, many hours people just don't see.
Thank you. We're getting there.
Thanks, Ed. Who's got a cellphone with a clock time?
Right here.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve. Let us head a little bit into our agenda tonight, and then we'll swing quickly back to the public hearing. On the new business, appointment of Lisa Colby as an alternate.
I'm going to recuse myself from this decision. It's my stepmother.
Yeah. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You can come on back now. All right, I think it's probably safe to head into the public hearing tonight. We have opened our meeting.
They have to open.
So, now you guys don't pledge, right, John?
No.
All right, so then if that's the case, if John would open his meeting and then where Damon's not here and we don't have a clerk, maybe Elizabeth, your clerk, could read the notice.
Elizabeth, she'll read it.
All right, so go ahead, Damon.
So, I opened the planning board meeting of December, of March the 8th, the co-meeting, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to hear a special permit application for multifamily up to four years and site plan review of a property at 11 Central Street in Byfield. And so, we're open, and so Elizabeth.
Now, Elizabeth, who is the clerk of the planning board, is going to read the public notice.
So, this is the Town of Newbury Board of Selectmen and Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, March 8th, 2016, at 7:15 PM at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Massachusetts, the Newbury Board of Selectmen and the Newbury Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing for a Water Supply Protection Overlay District Special Permit, Board of Selectmen, a Special Permit for Multifamily Up to Four Units Planning Board, and Site Plan Review Approval Planning Board for conversion of the former Methodist Church at 11 Central Street, Byfield, map U-11 parcel 67, as shown on the drawings entitled Site Plan Review Submission, 11 Central Street, Newbury, Massachusetts, dated January 26th, 2016, and described in supporting documents prepared by Design Consultants, Inc. and Graff Architects. Applicant Valmore Development LLC, Chris Horan, manager. The applications are on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk in the selectman's office and in the planning office, 25 High Road, Newbury, Massachusetts. For more information, contact the selectman's office at (978) 465-0862, extension 301, or the planning office at (978) 465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development should appear at the time and place designated above.
All right, thank you. Do I have to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Jonathan.
John, come to the microphone.
I've been advised I should just announce that I recuse myself because the applicant is a client of mine.
All right, once it?
And so, what I need to do now is announce that Peter Pecos will take John's place as he's our alternate.
Okay.
And he will take his place so he can vote on the issue.
Peter, will you hold your hand up? I thought so, Peter. All right, now, if I understand John and Martha, the direction that we're going to go in, we're going to ask for a finding on conditions from the Board of Selectmen on Chapter 97 and some of the regulations that pertain to the water district, and are you guys going to go through and actually go through voting on your two things tonight also?
Probably not tonight. That we, we want the applicant to make his presentation because the board has not seen a presentation yet. Once the presentation is made, we'll take that under advisement. Have you talked to the town council about it?
I have.
So, Martha, you have our marching orders, then?
Right, I did speak with town council there. Couple of procedural things. First of all, tonight, Selectman Jespersen is not present. However, he can invoke the Mullen Rule by which he can watch the video and certify that he has watched it, and then participate in any proceedings going forward, whether it's, whether the public hearing stays open or not. Even if it closes tonight, he can participate in the proceedings and vote on any decision that the selectman reach.
So, we have a super majority here, though. Are we voting tonight?
Um, well, it's up to you, but my recommendation would be that you hear all the evidence tonight, and then if everybody's satisfied, close the public hearing, and then the two boards can deliberate separately at another time. You have 90 days within which to make a decision, and what I would suggest is that you authorize me, or me and Ellen, or whomever, to draft a decision which would then be acted on later. So, you can discuss the conditions tonight that you would like to have included but not actually take a vote tonight, because if you take a vote tonight on a decision, then that actually, you have to file within 14 days. So, but you actually have 90 days within which to make a decision.
So, both boards aren't going to really vote tonight. We're actually here to review the information and have any questions answered and maybe ask for questions from the audience?
Correct. And then if you feel that everything has been satisfied and there are no further questions and you don't need any further information from the applicants, then you may find it appropriate to close the public hearing, and then that would end the joint work between the two boards, and each board would deliberate separately at its own, you know, regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay.
And as noted before, the two special permits do require super majority, so that's four, four members voting in favor. The site plan review is a simple majority.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
And I do have, after Mr. Horan has given his presentation, I do have some comments from town boards and committees if the boards would like to hear those.
All right, great. So, I guess the applicant should have his presentation at hand and come up forward.
No, I'm fine. I'm good.
Here we are.
That's what I was going to ask you.
That's okay, I don't care. Yeah, that's fine.
This is the dam.
Oh.
Cover.
Yeah. Black and dam.
What are we going to do, talk about that?
We're going to get the green light from you to do the.
While they're getting set up.
Grant, we talked about it.
How many people are here for the presentation at hand now? Raise your hand. How many people are here for the lock and dam? All right, I'm trying to get a gauge for what everyone else is here for, but that's okay. So, we'll, we'll wait and find out, I guess. Yeah.
That's perfect. Yeah. May hit Tracy.
You are, I think. You want me to look? In case, because you don't want to sit here if you're not. Not sure, so you are, and you'll be right after this presentation. So, you gotta wait for that. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Horan. I am the manager of Valmore Realty Development LLC, and we're here to discuss the redevelopment of the old Methodist Church in Byfield Village and its conversion to four townhouse units. With me is Steve Sawyer from DCI Consulting. He's going to talk about the site plan, and where's Paul? Paul Schellen, he's the landscape designer, and he will discuss some of the changes we're thinking about with the landscape. I first want to thank both boards for doing a joint meeting like this. I really appreciate it. It's nice to just be able to come together and talk about this once, so thank you. So, I am developing the project, but I'm also a direct butter. Some of you know I developed Yellow School in Byfield Village, so I'm hoping this is a continuation, the enhancement of the village right when you come in. The school has been done over, and when this is done over, I think it's really going to make a nice mark on the town. I do think it's, it's consistent with the town master plan to, first, we're reusing an old, dilapidated building, and secondly, we're providing diversity and housing stock. It's not just single families now. We're introducing four townhouse units in a, sort of densely populated residential area. With that, I'd first like to give you an overview of the project, and then I'll let the consultants chime in. This is the landscape plan, but I'll let Paul talk about that. I just want to use it as an overview of. Can everyone see that?
Do we have these in here?
You should.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Chris, can I just make a statement to the audience kind of quickly?
Sure.
And Martha or John, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was hard to maybe pick out of the public notice, but if you're going to do something within the village zoning and especially four dwellings in one building, it's going to take a special permit?
Oh, I wanted to talk, yeah, sorry.
You know what, you do it then.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we need three special permits. Because we're in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, we need a special permit from the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
And we need two special permits from the planning board. One to convert a church to a four-unit, multi-unit development, and because we're adding, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we're adding more than 1,000 square feet, it falls into the site plan review. So, that necessitates a special permit with the planning.
Site plan review.
Yeah, exactly, with the planning board as well. So, we're really here seeking three special permit approvals. Is that right, Martha?
Well, two special permits.
One site plan review.
Yeah, oh, it's not, technically, a site plan, yeah. Yep.
And I think just for my board, as we go forward, and once again, Martha can correct me because she's pretty much put a lot of this together, but within the water supply district, for what we're looking at tonight, you're going to be involved as our board in a finding of conditions, and those finding of conditions are going to be pertinent to our bylaw, and they're in most ways going to be, the information is going to be wrapped around. In no way during the construction or thereafter adversely affect existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available to the public water supply district, and to be designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topological drainage, vegetation, and other related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. And that's kind of what we're looking at as a board, and probably not a lot more, but probably not a lot less. Thanks.
Thank you. So, you have the existing footprint of the Methodist Church, which, by the way, that closed November of 2014. So, the main footprint of the church is this right here in this small, one-story property here. We are maintaining all of the existing footprint. What we are adding as far as buildings are concerned is this roughly 13 by 13 addition onto the church, we're extending it to be 13 by roughly 30, and instead of on one story, it's going to be two stories. We're doing that for a couple of reasons. One, I think it feels better with the existing building, and secondly, we needed it for bedrooms on that, four units with three bedrooms on each floor, they're a little bit cramped, so we needed for the room for that. The net increase in square footage is about 260 square feet. And we also have proposed a two-car garage here and a two-car garage here. And as far as driveways, Steve will speak to this, but you have four units that were basically breaking the existing building up into four quadrants, and each unit will have, on each corner, a separate entrance. This unit here will have two exterior, there's eight total exterior parking spaces proposed. This unit here will have two, this unit will have two outdoors. You'll drive in here from Church Street on this corner to have two parking with a backout plus the two-car garage, four total, two in and two out. Same over here, coming off of Central Street, two outside, two inside. And other than that, it's parking in additional buildings, you will see the walkways to each entrance here, here, the small walkways here and here, and then two decks, one off each of the back units that are using one street, and two patios, one on Central Street and one on Church Street here. So, that's sort of the overview without getting into too much detail for the site and landscape of what's happening here. We are proposing four units, as we said. Each unit will have three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and it'll be on three floors. We're using the basement space, which is finished already, the first floor that exists, and adding a second floor. And the square footage for each unit approximately, it varies a little bit, but it's approximately 2,500 to 2,600 square feet per unit. So, this is the existing elevations. And this is proposed. So, for instance, this here on Central Street, you see it's just one big flat roof line. Where we're putting in the second floor, that roof line is going to change a little bit, and instead of putting one long dormer, we decided to do, by the way, Ellen Graff, the architect, is on vacation, otherwise she would be here, so I'm doing her job. It'll be a dormer with an A-frame here, so it breaks it up a little bit. You see the entrance to one unit here, and the entrance to the second one here, and a small dormer here on that story that I told you that we're adding on to that addition in the back. If you go on to, this is the side facing the highway, there's that second story we're adding, I showed you about, we're widening it. Dormers off each end. This is the church. This is the side actually facing the old Yellow School on Lud Street. These are the two decks in the back that you see, comparing it to this one right here. And you see the new window structures coming across, so a lot of the old windows now, we're going to try to find a home for that old glass, but a lot of it is getting changed to these new windows, which will be integrity, black flag windows on the outside, white on the inside. All the clapboard that we're proposing, it's going to be a hardy clapboard. Right now, the church has had a big problem with peeling. You guys that have drove in, many of you have probably driven by there, but it's been peeling for many years, and it can't seem to fix the problem, but this, this will fix it. The new siding, coupled with all the insulation that we're going to be doing, should, will definitely fix that problem.
Chris, is the hardy siding, the cement plank, what's hardy siding?
Yeah, it's a cement.
Yeah. And it's, and it's pretty well used now all over the place.
Very much so, yeah. Especially new developments, maintenance-wise, it's fantastic.
Yep.
Fairly easy to put up.
Looks more like clapboards than vinyl.
Very mu, oh, yeah. It looks like really nice clapboard, you can't tell the difference.
Yep.
Yeah, it'll make a big difference. But I'll show you the renderings, too, you'll get a better feel for what it's going to look like in picture. These are the floor plans, again, breaking them up into four, four separate quadrants. Each floor plan generally follows the same idea. If I take this front one, this is where the steeple is right there. You come into the entrance, I apologize, this is only so big, you probably can't see this in detail, but the first floors are open space with open concept dining room, living room, and kitchen area with pantries and stairs going up and down with fireplace. And that carries through every single one. These two front ones have a patio, these two back ones facing Lud Street have the decks that we talked about. The basement here, each unit will have one big open room, we're going to try to utilize four windows. There are existing window walls now, so we're going to introduce them back to the building to try to get some light in the basement, along with mechanical storage and a small office for each unit. And the new second floors will house three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. So, I have two renderings here. One is for Central Street, and one is for Church Street. So, on the Central Street side, I'm proposing a fence only because the noise and the light glow from the cars coming off that hill from 95, it's pretty dramatic, so I'm just trying to create some privacy and mitigate some of that, that light coming down. So, it is a proposed fence up to eight feet. It's really six feet or so, six and a half, plus the steelwork on the top, so it's not solid the whole way. To soften it, we have some curves coming down here. That is basically the color that I'm proposing. That is a hardy color. I'm trying to, to make some consistency, architectural consistency. We're doing a lot of band molding, decorative architectural shingles. This is decorative, not decorative, but architectural asphalt shingles on the top. Again, the hardy wood that I talked about. On the Church Street side, in an effort to make it more residential, I have a five-foot picket fence there, and we're going to create a lot of the screening for parking and patios and things like that, decks with landscape, as much trees and bushes and color as we can see. Here you get an idea of what one of the two-car garages will look like, again, carrying a lot of the detail that you see on the main building. So, parking-wise, on this upper end, I said there were two cars here for this and two cars here. If you notice, lampposts as well throughout, again, to try to soften things. So, for parking, I'm trying to create a condition where people aren't backing up into main roads. So, although these will be exclusive right to use for. So although these will be exclusive right-to-use for these units for parking, this is a common sort of pathway, so when people, for instance, for this unit, it can back out there and come on to Church Street, or this side can back out here and go onto Central. So it provides enough room. And I'm gonna try to also put more backout area here and here, I'm pretty certain we have it. It's not showing here, but it's gonna allow people to have more room to back out and in and out for sort of mobility. Parking back on this end is a little bit easier because it's not as congested, there's much more room. As far as lighting, it's on the floor plan, but it's so small, you're not gonna see it. But the lighting I'm proposing is not up top with floodlights coming down, it's all downlighting. So you'll have wall sconces throughout where there's decks and entrances and patios. And it'll be covered here, so it's all facing down. You'll have a lot more lighting from cars coming from Central Street than you will from this building, especially on the Church Street side where it's, you have residential homes abutting in as well. So all downlighting, nothing glaring. And then again, on this backside, we're doing not all, a full dormer, we're doing the A-frame with a dormer here and introducing different shapes and scales, so it doesn't look bulky and just one massive dormer. That was the idea there. Okay, so I think the best thing, Steve, you wanna?
Yeah.
Talk about the site? And then we'll have Paul come in and talk about landscape?
Yeah.
And then I'll finish it up.
Good evening, Steve Sawyer with Design Consultants. This site here, it's a fairly compact site. The redevelopment of it, what we looked at was stormwater, sewer, water, and also circulation. As Chris had mentioned, there is opportunity for cars to back and pull out forward. Even this car here at the edge, it would be a little tight, but he can back and pull forward this way. Most likely, they'll figure out, it's a redundant use, people live there, they figure out the best way to pull in and utilize those spaces. These are much simpler, as he said. We, there's two car garage along with parking, additional two spaces here, so there's actually additional parking than the two spaces per unit required. As far as sewer, we have done test pits. Alex Parker completed the test pit program at the base of the hill. We found sands in a good offset to groundwater. So it's, we have ample area to support the, it's roughly thirteen hundred gallons a day, based on Title V flow. Title V inflates those flows by double, so our actual flow, our actual demand is half of that, so around seven hundred and fifty gallons a day. These fields are sized, are actually sized for the use. We haven't done the detailed design for the septic system yet. There will be no waivers or variances required, it's not allowed because this would be considered new construction where the proposed flow of the building, the proposed residential use flow is greater than the previous use. But we can meet all of Title V requirements. I've also indicated the locations where we see the tanks going. It's gonna require two tanks, a twenty-five hundred gallon tank and also a fifteen hundred gallon tank. Two tanks are required due to the fact it's multifamily, you need multi-compartment tanks there. Now, as for stormwater, with the four units and the redevelopment, this project isn't subject to the DEP stormwater regs, but due to the fact we're in the overlay, the water protection overlay district, we have provided mitigation. The main charge in the overlay district is not to degrade the storm, or degrade the groundwater and provide recharge area. What we're doing is we're directing with the sands in the good off, the great offset to groundwater, this site is optimal for underground chambers and infiltration. It's out of sight, what we do is we take the clean roof water and introduce that back into the ground. So these two new garages are tied, we have a central infiltration area, chamber system between these two garages. So these two are fully directed to that. Also, a good portion of the rear half of the existing structure, we're directing in that manner. There is a downspout, I've coordinated the downspout locations with the architectural plans. There is an area here that there is no downspout, so what we provided is an infiltration pipe, infiltration drip edge with a pipe to collect the stormwater and direct it to the infiltration chambers. So we're basically picking up half of the church in the two new garages. One minor change that I've made on this in regards to stormwater is I had a large, I had a drip edge, stone diaphragm at the down gradient side of the parking. Now, one item with the parking is, there is opportunity for pollutants, sand, grit, and maybe some oil mixed with that from the cars. So introducing that, introducing that directly into, back into the groundwater is probably not the best idea. DEP, while it's not considered an infiltration trench, it's a pre-treatment device. DEP does say, if you're in a Zone A, Aqua for Protection area, that you're supposed to line it, line it and not reintroduce it directly back into the ground. While this isn't a Zone A, it's in the overlay protection district, it functions the same, it's there to protect the groundwater. So we've taken that simply out. And now, any of the, we have a lawn, you know, a nice big lawn area, rainy the grit or anything would just get caught in the grass in the lawn area, landscape area, and not pose any potential harm to the groundwater. Even with that removal, I reran the stormwater calculations. The important item here is that we increase or not, not reduce the amount of water recharging into the ground. Prior to that, we were away, we were, I think, a forty percent increase in recharge. We really didn't need to go that far. Taking that out, the entire site, pre and post, we're actually increasing the recharge by ten percent for the two-year, ten-year, and hundred-year event. So we're still, without those drip edges, we still meet, meet the overlay protection district regulations and thought there. As far as water service, water service will be off of Church Street. And that, it will be a fire protection service along with a potable water service. Most likely be a two-inch, two-inch service for the fire and an inch and a half for the water service. I think that, as far as the engineering aspects, that covers it. As far as, actually, one item here, there is a lot of, there's a large area of gravel parking. That would be, I think we'll review that with the landscape plans. That would be restored to a landscape area. And as far as water quality, prior to any water hitting this catch basin, we have a large landscape area that would, that would treat and infiltrate the stormwater. So as far as the proposed condition, we have a substantial improvement as it exists today with water flowing across that gravel lot directly into that catch basin. That covers it as far as the stormwater.
Do you want to just talk briefly about diminishing traffic effect for church compared to?
Oh, okay, yeah, as far, yeah, traffic impacts, I think on a, so Brandon, there is a heavy, as far as parking demand, this would reduce the parking demand in the area and reduce the traffic, particularly on a Sunday. As far as the. And as far as the residential use, the four, I think we provided the trip gen in the memorandum that was submitted with the planning board. I don't have those numbers with me, but with the four units, it's a de minimis amount of traffic generated with this. We have separated all the driveways and the opportunity for them to pull out in a forward motion. So the design is thoughtful in that, in that manner, providing a safe manner of egress in parking on site. And I think that, that covers that.
Steve, before you move too far asunder, can we pull back to stormwater for just a second?
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna say, and then I want my board to ask any questions because we'll catch the questions on stormwater right now. You know, there is some new roofs, and they seem to be mitigated by that type of septic that you have there.
Yeah.
Are you adding any asphalt?
Yes, we are.
So, and this isn't negative, because I think it's a great project. We're just gonna try to accomplish, obviously, what our mission is. I've seen that you, or you have informed me that you've pulled out those, would you, I mean, when you say, are they like mini swales with gravel in the bottom?
Basically, it's, I guess it would be a, I don't know if you recall what Tapira, Mark Tapira did over on Ross Lane. At the, at the edge of the, edge of the road, there's about a two-foot wide strip, and it's a river-run rock, and the water just pours into it and then goes down into the sand.
Now, my only thought is, and then I'll ask the guys if they have any questions, is that a good thing that you took that out? I mean, would it be better if it were in? I mean, I hear John shaking his head, and he's the stormwater king, so.
It was actually your suggestion, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Then, John, fill me in as to why.
I'm sorry?
Tell me why it's a good idea.
Oh, okay, well.
Up, up, John.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The basic DEP regulations for stormwater management say that you get as much water back into the ground as you can within reason, and they establish guidelines for that. Except, in certain circumstances, and obviously, a water supply district would be a major example of that circumstance, you need to treat any water that could be contaminated before you pour it into the ground. Now, you can treat it a lot of ways. You can treat it by running over a lawn, just running it over the lawn will treat it. The water that's going into these cul-de-sac infiltrators is coming off the asphalt roofs on the, on the roof of the church, a roof of everything. If those roofs were metal, there would be an issue with pre-treatment. But they're not metal, they're gonna be asphalt, so there is no problem. It's regarded as pure water, in it goes. Water running off a parking area is liable to have all kinds of stuff in it, primarily heavy metals. And you just don't want to even think about trying to treat that. It's not practical under these circumstances. So that's why Steve and I had talked about simply bagging the direct approach to the groundwater table and let it go through the grass, the sod, and everything else, and get itself cleaned up on its way.
Good, thanks, John, that answers my question. Any other questions on stormwater right now? We'll have Steve standing there for my board.
Do you have a stormwater report?
There was a stormwater letter issued along with calculations.
Okay.
Is that in this packet? I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Steve, does it make any difference to look at, you said the project at Woodbridge School, they put a heated driveway in with cobbles and gravel? Does that help anything in the stormwater calculations at all? Does it help the infiltration system?
No, I guess with this project, we're not, we're not proposing any permeable paper or permeable bituminous surfaces.
That's what I said, does it, would it help?
It would not help, it would not.
It's already a major plus. In fact, when we get around to doing something with Main Street some years from now, Chuck, this is gonna help our position with DEP when the time comes, because we've already had a decrease that, yeah.
If TV didn't hear that, John said that was gonna be, I'm just reiterating, John, what you said because you didn't go to the microphone. And John said it would actually be a negative effect almost to what was there, right? What they're doing is gonna create less discharge to the area because of the way.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So the net effect is less.
Yes.
By what Chris is proposing, good. Any questions, Chuck, JR?
Not on stormwater, mine's on parking.
All right, then we can move on to whatever's next.
Okay. My question on parking is, is you're coming out onto Central Street that is a main, heavy-traveled road. You have access onto that property from Lund Street. My quiz on that is, you're not coming in from Lund Street for the very simple reason that's where the fields are gonna be? Because that's a very less traveled road. Central Street, as you've already stated, people coming right off of the highway, they're flying along.
We were trying to keep the garages practically as close to the units as we can, and if they came there, the garages would be much further down. Is that what you're talking about, Chuck?
Yeah.
Access from Lund Street would make it less, a lot less travel, you know.
Well, plus, we don't own this land too, but it's a private, it's a private.
It's private, so one thing you could do is, we could do a common and split it. We can pave, we can pave over this, we just.
Well, another reason why, and maybe Paul can speak to this, but the idea was, because this is right in the main section of Byfield, we're trying to maintain some open space. So that's why between these two units, we have some landscape here, and a new stone wall here, and sort of an open area here, we're trying to keep that as a sort of viewing line and sort of an open area in the Byfield District. That was another reason too, we just thought it laid out better the land. You're further down here too, on Lund Street. So in the visibility, when you're coming out of here, both here and here, there's nothing blocking you. You have a straight shot at it.
Yeah.
There's no trees or anything blocking your sight.
Yeah, it is a twenty-five mile an hour zone anyway, so, you know, I'll give you that.
We just, I guess, at the end of the day, Chuck, we thought it made for a better site plan. We were trying to minimize the pavement too. If you come from here, now you have more pavement, so.
Yeah, that would, coming off of Lund, you would probably increase, you would increase your impermeable coming, coming from down.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So, does the applicant have the second person, third person?
Also too, I didn't mention it, but the, in this business district, you're.
Chris, come on at the microphone.
Sorry about that. In this, in this Byfield Business District, your lot coverage is maybe up to fifty percent. This is just shy of half that, it's saying it was twenty-four point seven, so I just wanted to make that note.
Well.
Good afternoon, board members, good evening rather. My name is Paul Schillen, I'm from Georgetown. I'm a landscape contractor, designer, consultant, I guess, and I was lucky enough to be invited to be in this project. Chris started with a really great way of dealing with this building, I thought, with the, sort of the details, the sort of New England style of the architecture and stuff. It made it quite, quite easy for us to look at the landscape and just simply look around at the downtown and say, how can we make this all really fit in? Just quickly, keeping this open space and separating these little buildings around is definitely more reflective of a New England sort of surrounding where you have small-out buildings in different places, and it just, it looks a lot more like what we see around that neighborhood. So as they've all mentioned, we've got some nice hardscape areas, walkways, things like that, typical residential scale. We're trying to, again, add some street trees. Chris has already put some street trees down at the schoolhouse, which is really nice for a downtown main thoroughfare to have a lot more green space in there. We've also really did make an effort to get an open space in here that's already here. You guys are all used to that already, sort of an open field. And our intention is certainly to keep one, two, or three of these existing large trees to give this building the scale that it already has, and again, what we're already used to. If for some reason the septic systems don't allow for that, certainly getting new shade trees in as quickly as possible to let that get back to what we're all used to looking at, that would be the definite goal. At the same, at the time that we're trying to make it look good for everybody else in town, we're also trying to make it comfortable as a residence for the four units in here. That's why we do have some fencing, we try to minimize the fencing because having fencing right up against the road is not always ideal. That's again, why we've decided to make it a little more interesting with two different patterns on the fencing and make it as short as possible and as low as possible, and it's obviously very much in keeping with the architecture there, so that'll be nice. But also giving them evergreen screening as they look out into their back area. You still have an opportunity to sort of look up in here, it's sort of semi-private, but not entirely private. And that's really important to these several buildings as you move down into downtown, and you are getting into more of a public space. Clearly, we've, again, taken, taken the, a lot of care to keep everything low as, in these entry areas so that people can see comfortably. Luckily, there's only maybe one or two cars coming in and out of there at any given time, so there shouldn't be too much traffic in there. We've got, still on this end, there is some interesting grade changes in that area too. It slopes down considerably, so that'll give us an opportunity to add a little bit of stonework, some, some nice New England aged stone-type boulder work in here that will allow us to put some more of a, much more native-type planting down below here, which again, if you go in any direction out of town, you're gonna see these kind of native plantings all over the place. So our intention is to make it look, really look like it's been there for a long time. We talked about light, nice residential-scale light posts, more, a little bit of screening. We talked about light, nice residential-scale light posts, more, a little bit of screening in various places and again, some of these little private patio areas and I think that's about it. The hope, again, is to make it look like it's been there for a long time.
Have you called out the species on this site plan? What exactly you're planting where? I don't see it on, on this...
Not currently, we haven't. I think you're going to find that it is very much in keeping with what you see around there in Norway's.
When will you, when will you have that? When will you have that?
Whenever you need it. We can do that pretty quickly.
Okay. And I see that you're keeping the large evergreen as you're driving in for, I think that's a good idea.
We're actually keeping, right now, we're keeping all the trees circled right here. Is that, this, you talking about this one?
Yeah, yeah.
It's this one?
It's almost iconic.
It's beautiful, I don't want to touch that. This one, there's one here that we want to keep, we'll have to trim it back a little bit. These are the three big ones in the bag, that exists. So, as of now, and you have seen, preliminary doesn't think we have to. You want to speak to those three trees?
Yeah, I think, uh... Yeah, so the, this tree, we're routing the sewer around and pulling the tanks away. So, this one for sure, this one for sure, this one's a little tight. It's a little bit tight. We'll all be, depending how, there will be some root damage to get the septic in. I think we, we'd have to see as we get the septic in how the tree looks, whether we need to take that one. Just because of the five-foot overdig, we'll be up pretty, we'll be up within a couple of feet of the, of the trunk if they overdig.
That would be the only tree in question, I think. We've got to do everything we can to try to preserve it. I, I don't like taking whole trees back. And Martha brought up a point that I wanted to address. There are some monuments surrounding this site. There's one right here that is actually not on our property, so it really doesn't...
So, it's in the right of way?
It's in the right of way. And there's a, there's one here as well, which I think might, does fall on our property. Absolutely no intention. We can put it in the condo docs and the bylaws, it does not get touched. We're, we're in no way going to disturb any monuments on this property.
Perfect.
Not going to happen. As a matter of fact, there's even a, a little Bible that's built into the church here. Did you see it on the... I was telling Heidi, someone called me and I think Martha spoke to him. Martha was in?
Yeah.
I get it, was it his grandfather or great-grandfather? Actually, she's built it. So, he called me and asked me what I was doing with it and I said, I'm giving it to you. So, he's going to take it off the building and reclaim it, so... But we are, we are keeping basically everything that's on this site. We're not really adding much here. So, we're trying to work within the existing buildings as much as possible. It's a, it's a good old building. It was built by a bunch of Methodist, so it's strong as an ox. And it's, it's a great template, so, and I, I do think, at the end of the day, it'll, it'll markedly enhance, we continue to enhance the Byfield area and I am a direct of honor, I, I, I'm going to be looking at this every day, so I have more than enough interest and concern in trying to make this project work and work for the neighbors and Byfield.
John, are you going to ask more questions now of them or are they coming back to you?
They'll, they'll, we'll probably come back at a certain time and we, we need some time to review it. Although, I just asked board members and no one really had any further questions. My, my only comment is this, that about three years ago, the town and the board looked at Byfield and looked at ways that we could make some changes to the zoning code and specifically made changes to encourage up to four dwelling units in that area. And from a personal point of view, I couldn't be happier to see a project like this. I think it's a terrific project. It's a great reuse of a building and I encourage you to move forward, so, but we'll be reviewing it with Martha and get back to you. But I think maybe the, maybe we don't open it to the...
Say it again?
We open it up for comments.
Is there any other comments from, from our board then? I would like to echo a little bit what John said. It doesn't seem like you're cutting any corners and it seems like a nice endeavor. Chuck, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. I, I saw the extreme effort and the great quality of work that you put into the yellow school and I'm sure you'll carry that right over to this, so, thank you.
Thanks.
It looks beautiful.
Alicia, no?
Um, the, the thoughtfulness to keep the trees in the monuments, I mean, those three big trees, they really hold things together at the bottom of the hill. It's, um, I'd much rather see this than see it get knocked down.
And I've been told there used to be a lot more trees here, but I guess died off, so...
It looks like it's a, it's going to be a beautiful building.
Now, John just said to me and I concur, it would be nice to take questions or whatever people would like to know from the audience. Dale?
Dale Williams, Scotland Heights. I think it's a great project. I think it's going to be beautiful. My only question is this fence line coming down and the egress from the parking area. I know when I travel a road and I see a resident coming out from behind a fence, when there's not a lot of room between the fence and the road, it can be intimidating to the traffic. They see somebody pulling out or the person pulling out is pulling out a little too far because they're trying to get a visual look left and right before they pull out to the road. So, my question is, how much space is here between the fence line and the actual road?
Excellent question. Are you talking about from here to here, this, this area? No.
Where the garage is.
Right there.
Right, as they pull out, the fence line's here, the road is here. What's the distance between the fence line?
Between here and here?
No, from here to the road.
Literally, how far is the fence from the road?
How far does that par-? From driver can get a visual left and right.
So, the fence is here?
Yes. They're pulling out from the parking area toward the Central Street.
Yep, yep. When they come out, you want to make sure they have a sightline here.
Yes, right.
So, what's the, the district here and here?
Yeah, yeah, basically.
I'd have, yeah, I'd have to look at that. I'd, uh...
Steve, does it, does it look like a car's, car's length?
It looks, it appears that the nose of a car, you know, actually, there's a couple of cars on that plan that they...
Is it on here?
Ten feet.
Yeah, it's ten feet.
Eight, eight, eight to ten feet.
No, 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 well, no. It's, it's, so the nose of a car pulling here, you're going to make sure that the, the sightline, that the driver's eye is, is...
So, what's that? This is ten seven, so...
It's just about ten feet.
Ten feet.
It's about ten feet.
Yeah.
I think in some respects, it's a good thing that it's 10 feet because...
Definitely. No, it's, it's a good point. And while we're at it here, the fence goes to here, so you have 13 feet here plus another 20 feet here, so the fence will play a role there.
Yeah, a typical car is about 16 or 18, you know, a big car is 20 feet, so 10 feet's half of a car, so you, you would, you're, you're, the driver would be in front of the fence, so he could see, he would be...
When the plows are coming up or down, it's probably just as well that they're a little bit back.
Definitely, definitely.
So, especially if it's really heavy ice, right, James?
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Build, build those fences strong. All right, is there any other questions from the audience? Yes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad I'm from New Jersey, but, um...
You still have to go up, you still have to go up.
Still have to go up.
It's the TV, it's for the TV.
It's the television.
It's the TV. So, I, I really don't have a question, but we live at 17 Church Street, which is directly behind the church, so, Judith Camper.
So, this has a huge impact on us and I just think it's, it's a beautiful building and it's going to be a tremendous improvement to that area, to downtown Byfield and certainly for, I think, everybody who abuts that, what, what is a church, which is in a terrible state of deterioration. So, we're very excited about it.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to hear.
My name's Dan Schaffner, I'm at 8 Central Street. That is my view right there of the half-church. To me, this is the first time I'm, I'm seeing this. It looks like a, a good plan. Certainly, the church is definitely in a state of deterioration. Looking at the plans, I don't have any major problems with the exception of this driveway right here and a little bit that one, but not as much. Of course, living on Central Street, I know coming out of my own driveway, I do have to back out onto Central Street. It is a 25 mile an hour zone, no one follows that. People coming up Central Street more than actually down from the highway. It's actually worse that way. I think as long as the distance of the fence on that one is okay, I think it should be all right. This one, even on Church Street, I'm sure you can attest, people come down one way, flying down that way too, so... You know, people coming out of that driveway, I think are going to have some, some issues, so...
It kind of has that same 10 foot, 10 feet that we were talking about, so, right here. I've actually done it. I've put my car there on both sides. The view lines are actually really good.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and I, I know there's kind of a little driveway on the backside on Church Street now, but, I mean, you know, those are my main concerns about the project. You know, again, I think it's a great idea for the, for the area. I've seen what you've done with the, the schoolhouse and it's great, but, you know, again, living, looking at it, that'd be my major concern, so...
Great, thank you.
So, thinking about it, Chris and Steve, you know, now, in your mind, if there's anything you can do to expand those sightlines, you know, creatively and we're not commenting on them because the planning board probably would.
Sure. One thing I thought about, and I'll let your comments see. I'd like to put, and I, and I walked it off, I think there's plenty of room to do it, here and here, pavement as well. Because then you can either do this, you can back up, it just gives you more opportunity to maneuver in there and also increases your sightline. We're definitely not putting more landscape here for that reason. We don't want to overcome the sightline. But I'd like to put here and here as well.
Yeah, one, one thing that we can do is we can do a full, you know, I didn't do a full site distance analysis, which we can provide documentation of the, of the site distance at each entry based on the fence, the proposed fence location and submit that to the board.
Can I ask a question?
Your sightline's here, there's nothing blocking you, so I think you, you talked about people coming through Main Street sometimes go fast, yeah. You look plenty of that, yeah.
And where does the fence end at the back of the building?
Right here.
The, the other end of the, where's the...
Right here.
Right there.
Yep, so there's 13 feet plus, you know, 18 feet to park, so plenty of room.
Alicia?
So, I just have a question because I'm on the Board of Selectmen, so what comes to us is the, is the water overlay district. So, the stormwater is what interests me. I just want to, and I did see this that you submitted and I did read it. But I, so my question to you is, can you, I know you were saying that the recharge rate is, is greater than it was currently is.
Yeah, as, after it's developed, there's more water going into the ground by about 10 percent. 10 percent increase of water into the ground.
So, the standard that is provided by the DEP for the water overlay district, are you meeting or exceeding that standard?
We're exceeding it.
Okay, that was, I just wanted to clarify.
They just say to match it. And that's what your, your overlay just says, to provide, to not degrade the infiltration and provide recharge.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
I, I think we can close it. Let me, let me, I should ask Martha. Well, procedurally, what do you suggest we do now?
Well, first, I've got some comments from some town departments and committees.
Should we read those into the record, Martha?
Uh, yes. I don't know if you'd like me to read them or just...
That sounds good, you're right there.
Oh, I see they're all, all one.
The first, do you want me to actually read them?
You might as well. I mean, in case there's a question.
Uh, first one is from Chief Riley, said, "I reviewed the plans for the proposed development at 11 Central Street, the old Methodist church. From a police department perspective, these plans do not pose any public safety hazards. There seems to be ample space for the proposed parking spaces and the sightlines appear to be acceptable. I do not foresee any traffic difficulties. In fact, the use of this property as private residences would most likely have less impact on the traffic pattern than the prior use of the property as a church and meeting hall. If you need anything further, please do not hesitate to contact me." The second one is from Chief Walker, Fire Chief. "Fire prevention officer and I have reviewed the plans for the proposed development at 11 Central Street. The fire department would request that according to the standard NFPA 1.2010 that the individual units and common areas have an automatic sprinkler system." I think Sam...
We are putting in a sprinkler system, yeah.
"We would also request an addressable alarm system with RF notification or a dedicated phone line. The fire department would also like a dry sprinkler system set up into the steeple." I'm going to discuss that with you, "with good access for firefighters. We would also request heat detectors in the steeple. At this time, we feel there is ample space in the parking area which would provide proper placement for engine and ladder work if necessary. We would like to be part of this planning process throughout the phases to make sure we have achieved the NFPA standards."
I don't think it confuses me with the steeple, although that is most of the living space, so I can, I can have that conversation.
Yeah, I think if you have that, Chief Walker, then...
Yeah, that's not a problem.
And then from Sam Jocelyn, the Building Commissioner, the only question I would have is if the applicant is aware of the requirements to sprinkle the building, which you are. And other than that, zoning issues will be handled by zoning and, and he and I discussed that there actually are no zoning issues. There are no setback issues. We worked through that as the plan was being developed. And the building code will dictate the rest for me. From DPW Director James Saret, he said the plans look good to him. He had no comments. From Deb Rogers, Health Agent and Health Director, "The Board of Health witnessed soil testing located at Central, 11 Central Street in Byfield for a proposed new septic system. However, at this time, no proposed septic design has been submitted to the Board of Health as of today, so that's something that will be worked through as the process goes." And a letter from Channing Howard, Chair of the Historical Commission. "The Historical Commission met on February 11th, 2016 for a regular meeting. This above property was discussed as part of said meeting. The motion was made and carried unanimously for a vote of no comment by the commissioner, so they had no comments on the project."
Thank you, Martha.
All right, and as John looked over at me and said, he seems to be okay with what we've done and is ready to close. And I can ask my board if they're ready to close, but when we close the meeting, is there anything in the motion to close that, the public hearing, is there anything in that motion that I need to say? Or do you think we're okay? Do you...
Well, I guess just verify that there is no further comment or testimony to be taken.
Yeah.
And...
You ready, one of my board members to make this motion?
I'd like to ask a question of Martha, so that if, when we're reviewing it as separate boards and we have some issues that we might find as we've reviewing the plans, does that mean that we cannot make comments on those?
Like the septic?
Or, or, or whatever. I, I don't know. I'm just saying, this is the first time we've seen it. So, if we close it, are we foreclosing us on being able to make any suggested changes?
Ask Town Council.
I think so. I think you should continue it.
Come on up, come on up, just, if, we can't hear you. Uh, TV can't hear you.
I, I, I think in this case in Georgetown on the ZBA, we would continue it so that you could follow up with further questions.
And the issue here is if we continue it, do we need to continue it in tandem or can we continue it separately?
I don't, I don't think there's anything that requires you to hold it at the same time, other than the convenience of the boards.
I don't, I don't know how you all feel about that.
You know, I think we have to set up date times, certainly, and we have a lot coming up.
So, I don't know how you all feel about it.
I mean, as I go back... Ginny, you probably should go to the microphone too, so we all hear it. I think Town Council would like to clarify something and then...
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
And, and when she clarifies that, are we asking or saying that we would have another meeting together? Or we can continue to our regular selectmen's meeting and you're going to continue with your meetings? So, that's what we would clarify. Ginny?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything that, I mean, I haven't looked it up, but, and I will, but I don't think there's anything that, that binds you to, to have it in tandem indefinitely just because you opened it that way. And I think that you should definitely continue it as opposed to closing it if you're anticipating getting more information or seeking...
You know, I don't want to scare Chris at all. I, I'm just saying that, you know, we've seen this for an hour. We've seen a great presentation, honestly, philosophically, and, you know, we're all behind this. It's just that when you do look at some details, you might see some things and say, well, gee, it'd be nice if you could change that. And I don't know if we're going to find that, Chris. It just seems that, you know what I mean, it's...
From my perspective, I, I understand, I will absolutely respect the process. From a practical level, I'm just trying to get a sense of timing-wise. You, you know my world.
Well, we would continue ours to our, our, well, can we do it to our next meeting or, or to...
We could, because the one after would be...
Okay, so we would, we could go to the sixteenth.
So, Martha, just so I understand it, would we potentially get an answer from both boards at their next scheduled meetings? Is that what we're thinking?
Well, that's what I'd be aiming for, so, so we meet...
You, you would from us.
We meet on the... We meet on the sixteenth and I just want to give us our time to review this.
Absolutely.
And then we'll meet on the six, and we'll set a time certain for the public hearing in our recommendation just now.
Okay.
Alan, do you have the date of our next meeting? Excuse me?
The twenty-second.
Twenty-second of March.
For the Board of Selectmen to be the twenty-second and then for the public board to be the sixteenth, okay.
So, I'd entertain, all right, Chris?
Sure.
I would entertain a motion for, from my board to close the public hearing and continue it to our.
No, no, we want to continue it, not close it.
Continue it and not close it.
So moved.
You can do it better than I can, guys. Go ahead, make a motion, someone make it.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing to our next scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting on March twenty-second.
Twenty-second, second.
Second. At seven fifteen.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like a motion to continue the planning board's review of the special permit and the site permit for this project. And I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Time certain.
At what time? Seven, seven fifteen, seven fifteen? Any further discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, John, Alicia did it right.
Well, I had example.
Yeah, you did get corrected.
I could just thank you again for doing this together. And everyone in the town, the neighbors have been incredibly supportive and Martha has been absolutely wonderful and walking me through this process, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It is a beautiful project.
Thank you very much. Exciting.
We'll leave you, huh? Thanks, Martha.
See you later.
Good to see you guys.
Hang out if you want.
No, no. Plan wardens.
We're just gonna hold for a minute while the planning board.
Charlie does my.
I might be the only COVID, it's never a doctor's plan, never have.
Charlie does my driving.
Oh, yeah?
Do it.
Yeah.
You can stay and find out.
It's just a bunch of, it's a bunch of stuff about one day liquor licenses and, no. Ginny, are you here for what tonight?
Um, I just, I'm here.
Okay, okay. No, you here for executive session? Because Tracy is working on stuff in the office if you want to go see her. Stuff in the office if you want to go see her.
Oh, are you sure?
She's in there, yeah, we're okay, we'll yell if we get in trouble.
That was one of the most positive public hearings we've ever had. I'm impressed.
Member right now and she'll be back soon, so we're gonna talk about town administrator having no report. And then Chuck made a comment to me and I think he should say it to everyone about that proposal being a good proposal, right Chuck? What'd you say?
What's that?
On the last proposal we saw.
Oh, absolutely, it's one of the best public hearings I think we've ever had. I'm really, really impressed with it, so.
Oh, she isn't, okay. Oh, okay, oh, good. All right. Following along under new business, we have the appointment by Lisa Colby taking care of. Is Paula here, did I see her from North Coast or North Shore Cycles? Can you come up to the microphone, please? We have before us a request for public property use from North Shore Cyclists, Topsfield, Massachusetts. Paula is here, use of the Upper Green as a rest stop and comfort station during the annual North Shore Cyclist Blazing Saddles Century Event on Saturday, August twentieth, two thousand sixteen, from seven AM to two PM. I think I've heard Blazing Saddles before, you guys have done this before?
About twenty years.
Oh, my.
And is everything in auto? So, I would entertain a motion from my board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you, thank you for your attention, we appreciate it.
Do you want to talk about it at all for advertising or for TV?
TV audience.
Then we're good.
Okay.
Thanks, Paula.
Thank you, thanks again.
We have a one day liquor license for Katie Mon, is she here, Montero? How do I pronounce that?
Montero.
Montero, fundraising chair, Triton U Park, end of year banquet, Spencer Pierce Little Farm, end of, wow, it's already getting to be end of the season. Saturday, May seventh, two thousand sixteen, from two o'clock to five o'clock PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to review and approve and sign, a new business licenses follow for two sixteen, and it is, it's actually a business license that's been in operation before, it's just, or is it new?
It's not a new business, it's a new license.
Yeah, okay, new license. Ronnie Barrett, Barrett Transportation, Eighteen Hutchins Road, General Business Vehicle Transport. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to review, approve and sign, commercial clam put app, English is a good language, Jeff, commercial clam permit applications, two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen season as follows. I will try to vote.
Can we take them, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can we take them as a whole and not read them through or do we have to read them through?
We have to read them through.
We do have to.
Do you want to do it then?
Do you want me to?
Sure, and see how quick you go.
Okay, do I need to just read the names or can I?
Just Adams, Adams, Barrett.
I can go down the last names only, okay. Adams, Barrett, Boe Harland, Bennett, Brown, Brown, Burke, Campantelli, Castine, Colby, Colby, Colby Junior, Colby, 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 Conley, Corkum, Dodge, Dodge, Elwell, Foley, Foley, Fournier, Gallagher, Hall, Hall, Hostrat, Janrin, Kelly, Kelly, Locheck, 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 McGuire, Maxson, Maxson, Merrow, Moran, Nixon, 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 Noise, O'Brien, 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 Olson, Papoulis, Papoulis, Rock, Rocco, Rocco, Savage, Short, Short, Thistlewood the Third, Thistlewood, Thistlewood, Thurlow, Sitten, Welch, West, West, White and Wood.
Very good.
Uh, do we have any holds on that, otherwise we will approve all the names as said. Hearing no na, hearing no holds, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve all.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All, any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, under that, we have review of playing field and facility permit policy at Manta Field and, I'm stuck.
It's not been prepared.
Yep.
It's not complete, so we're skipping that, we're going to.
All right, listening, sorry, because I see some people out there that might have come for this agenda item. We're not particularly ready to produce this and I think Tracy's probably not feeling it well and she went home, so, and she was gonna do most of that presentation, so we're not gonna review this tonight and we'll do it at our next selectmen's meeting.
So, can I make a motion to table that until our next selectmen's meeting on the twenty-second?
I don't know if it's necessary, but you can.
Should I cut the yes?
Go ahead, do we have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, vote to approve Triton Regional School District's due date for submission of the district's FY seventeen final budget to be proposed from March fifteenth to March thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. I'm not positive, I understand, so maybe Alicia.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why?
And I didn't think Tracy had, I wish she were kind of here, but I think we're okay. I don't think she had a lot of trepidation about this, but it pushes everything a little closer and a little more towards her due dates for budget, right, Alan? Did she mention to you that it was a problem?
She did not.
All right, Alicia, do you have any background?
Yep, if we, we went to the district communication meeting with Triton and the three of the towns and there's a letter in our packet that explains that the, in line with discussion at Tuesday's evening meeting of the District Communications Committee, the Regional School Committee voted unanimously at its meeting on March two to request that the Boards of Selectmen of the towns of Raleigh, Newberry and Salisbury agree that the due date for the submission of the district's fiscal year seventeen final budget be postponed from March fifteenth to March thirty-first. The purpose of the delay would be to see if further information becomes available that would enable the school committee to reduce the impact of the tentative budgets on the towns. I would be grateful if you would bring the school committee's request before your boards of selectmen respectively. So, this is just, they're kind of hoping to get a little more money from the good old Commonwealth of Massachusetts to help offset the budget to the city, to the towns.
I think, I think what Tracy was kind of musing about is that sounds good on paper, but if it jumped up to be a lot more money, let's say, and bigger changes, that might throw out of whack a lot of the work she's done.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be any bigger money, I think it's gonna be, the hope is to be less money.
I'll entertain a motion from the floor and then we'll have some discussion, I mean, from the board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? I would vote that maybe our motion might carry because Tracy's not here to put her thoughts into this, but let's, if we vote, I don't know if that motion should carry unless there's a real problem from our town administrator, I wish I knew.
Well, I know that Tracy had a conversation with the assistant superintendent of schools and there was no, there was nothing out of the ordinary raised, at least to my, to my knowledge.
And you feel that if we voted on this from what you had for information, we'd not be pushing Tracy's schedule for budgeting?
I can't really say.
No, I had asked her that question and she didn't think it was gonna be a problem.
When do we need to know this, can we wait till our next meeting?
Next meeting is the twenty-second, so that would be.
No, yeah. Okay.
Can we word it pending?
I don't think, you know what?
Well, let me ask you this, Jeff, what's the benefit of not voting? Of not doing what the school has?
As long as the budget stayed the way it is, it's probably fine, if the budget did a flip.
Oh, it's not gonna do any flips.
Then I can go for that, all right.
Okay.
Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're on board again, Alicia. Vote to sign Suburban Coalition's Resolution Calling for the Full Funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's Recommendations. And is this, Alicia, trying to make sure that we were able to get all the money from the state that's doing it? What is this?
So, what's happened now in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is that the, there's a new governor and they have determined a different way to apply chapters or distribute chapter seventy funds. Whereas they make up the foundation budget. Now, without getting into a very long discussion about how that budget is made up, this, if you read this letter here in front of you, the result, this is a resolution calling for full funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations. Whereas the Massachusetts Foundation Budget Review Commission identified two areas, one being employee health insurance and the other special education, where the Massachusetts Foundation Budget significantly understates the true cost of educating students in the Commonwealth and is fair to keep, has failed to keep up pace with rising costs. Also, whereas this underfunding means the cost of providing a quality education has increasingly been borne by local communities, most often at the expense of other vital municipal operations. I think we can all attest to that. Whereas investing in education today leads to higher incomes and thus less investment in police, prisons, subsidized healthcare, low income housing, welfare, et cetera, in the future. Whereas state and local economies are most effectively strengthened by investing in education and increasing the number of well-educated workers. Therefore, be it resolved that the, we, they would like, this coalition would like us to insert the Board of Selectmen of the town of Newberry, calls on the Massachusetts Legislature and the Governor of Massachusetts to fully fund and adopt the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the immediate future. And then if you look on the next page, there's the rationale behind this, and I'm not gonna go and read the whole thing, but the Foundation Budget Review Commission was established by the legislature in the fiscal year sixteen budget and was charged with examining the foundation budget or chapter seventy formula. The formula was first established as part of the education reform led legislation back in nineteen ninety-three and has not been thoroughly reviewed or updated since that time. The Foundation Budget Review Commission found that the current formula understates costs significantly in two areas, employee health insurance and special education. If the recommendations of the FBRC had been implemented in the fiscal year sixteen budget, state funding for education would have been about five hundred million dollars more than it was. However, if chapter seventy reflected the true cost of education, the number would be closer to two billion dollars.
And I mean, what they're saying is that if they lived up to their part of the contract.
They're not living up to their part of the contract. So, this, what they're asking with the school committee, Dina Sullivan, our school committee rep, is asking us to do, all three towns, is to sign this and once again bring the fact that the legislature is not fully funding school districts the way they should and hopefully they can get some more money next year. They're looking to get a little bit more money this year.
Well, I mean, that next paragraph where it says, "Spending by school districts over the required net school spending amounts has increased as a whole for more than a decade, indicating the commitments are using local property taxes, diverting funding from other portions of the municipal budget to fund their schools. FY fourteen, the total spending above the foundation to the state is over one point seven billion dollars. At the same time, the state's commitment to municipal aid has declined. Since two thousand one, unrestricted local aid has been cut by forty-three percent. The net effect is a combination of cuts to local schools and school services and an increase in reliance on the regressive property taxes." And we had, Chuck, I don't know if you were on, but the rest of our board at one time, were you there when we went over to Raleigh and Bruce Tommett with us at the Raleigh Selectmen's Meeting, you were, I believe?
Yes, I was.
And what Bruce had said is that the state, when they head into a contract, and Ginny could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not always that the state has to honor that contract. And it sounds like, for me anyway, that the state's not honoring that contract.
Yeah, so what the foundation, the foundation budget is supposed to do is it's a formula, the chapter seventy formula, it's supposed to establish what it costs to educate a child in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And according to what Alicia just read, the, they're significantly underestimating it in two of probably the biggest cost driver areas. I mean, you all know what happens when you have to, when you have a special education student who has to go to boarding school or. So, I wouldn't, you know, it's not a contract, it's a law that the legislature passed saying that in Massachusetts, there's a constitutional right to an education for every student, K through twelve. And so, the Commonwealth is the one that has the right to bestow that education. And what Ed Reform said in ninety-three was, they're gonna establish a floor under which no school district could fall, the foundation budget, and they're supposed to fund it. But if the formula they use to establish what that foundation budget is for each school district significantly underestimates certain costs, they're not really fulfilling the intent of the law. But it not being a contract and they're the ones who get to say what they're gonna spend. There have been, I was actually at the AG's office and defended the state in the, it was a law, a lawsuit brought by five so-called property poor districts against the state about the foundation formula. So, I got, I got very conversant with all of that stuff, the Hancock decision. But anyway, you know, the bottom line is that there's a million different ways you could write this formula.
Right.
But, but, you know, local aid is being cut while this formula hasn't significantly changed since nineteen ninety-three.
And another important piece of this year's, with this new governor's budget, is the way that they've identified the cost for per pupil spending. It significantly impacts regional school districts, more so than cities and towns. It, it significantly impacts regional school districts, more so than cities and towns. And it is, it's, it seems to be the trend that this governor, governor wants to go on, and I think it's very important that all cities, towns that, that have regional school districts, because we have separate, we have Bruce, we have Brad, we have, we have Katie Ives, we have Lenny Mara, we have, I mean, all three different towns have three different, if, if all regional school districts use their clout and had all their representatives converse on the governor, they, he might listen. So I think the more pressure we can, political pressure we can give the state, the better our chances are at getting some more money and keeping our own, because we, we need the money here for our police department and our fire, we need our own town services. They're not going to subsidize us for them.
So, even though it seems a little complicated, it probably boils down to, we're asking for the full funding of the contract, which was the foundation budget, and I don't have, I can't say that, that's, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen sign this letter and submit it to our Massachusetts Legislature and the governor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entering into old business, Ben, are you old business? Division of Marine Fisheries.
Hopefully not, yeah.
It's a two thousand and sixteen community-based restoration program from the Coastal Marine Habitat Restoration Grant, and Ben's going to talk about it, Doug's with him.
Doug's going to talk about it, Ben's with him.
Good evening, board. This is some news on some old business. Let me keep one of those, pass that down. Then this is a blow up of the sediment, I'm sorry.
Oh, one in the time.
You take that, yep, take one and pass it down.
Sorry, Chuck, I misunderstood.
Thank you.
So, the first drawing I gave you, the blue right in the middle shows the Lockinville Dam. It is west of Lockin Road and east of ninety-five in Byfield. The second one I gave you, it's a blow up of the dam itself, of the area around the dam, and shows some of the features that are there, so you might hear some of those terms tonight. We started in two thousand and seven, I think, we got the first email relative to the Lockin Dam. We got serious about it in two thousand and nine, we conducted a study, and out of it we got a feasibility report. That feasibility report looked at four different options for that dam. They looked at rebuilding the dam, and actually, that wasn't even a rebuild, it would have been a brand-new dam, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Looked at a status quo, do nothing, that really isn't an option for us. And then we looked at two other removal options. One was a partial removal, which would only take the spillway out, you can see the spillway labeled there, and the other one would take the entire dam out. So there's a long earthen section, there's a concrete wall, and then there's the spillway itself. We, we settled on pretty much a partial removal is where, where we went, that we're presenting the project. I don't think the selectmen ever made a determination as to what they had for preference, and we've moved forward with, with that. Why I'm here tonight is there is a new round of funding out. There's a round of funding from NOAA and Division of Marine Fisheries, and we're talking about a project, not less than a ten, a hundred thousand dollars, no more than a million. So we fit right in there pretty well. There's a one-hundred-point standard that comes with this, so the better that we do with our application, the higher we rise. We're going to do pretty well when it comes to most everything other than their blue water designations, which are about three designations for coral reefs, Oregon, and I think it's the Oaxac River.
Yeah.
So we're not going to hit that, but we do very well with almost everything. The, the other thing that's in there is there is some match in there. There's a one-to-one match that will bring you right to the top, and if everything's created equal, the match rises you up, brings you up a little bit. That's for five points. So there's some very clear language in this new round of grants, that a project that meets all the merits may not have all the cash match we need, but we can do a lot of it kind. I think we're going to look pretty good with this round of funding if the Board of Selectmen wants to commit to the open-mindedness of taking this dam out.
Doug, are we looking for a full or partial removal, Ben?
Well, it, it, it all depends. We're going to have to look at this, as you look at that map that I, that I passed out to you, take the, the one that shows the Lockin Dam itself, the full, the pull-out picture. No, take this one right here and take a look at that. Where that spillway is, where that spillway is, is a dog leg left on the river. I, I question whether water dog legs left. I mean, unless there's some sort of bedrock there or something that's under the ground there, that river likely went right through there, right through where the dam is, where you see the tail race and the stock, so. Now take this one, so take the blow up of it. So likely, this river went right through here.
Mm-hmm.
That's where they put all the facility, that's where they put the mill, and then they likely built this. So we're going to have to take a look at that, we're going to have to take a look at that area that sits at the end of the earthen portion of the dam and make sure there's something there, whether it's structural or whether it's natural rock, to get that water to dog leg left. So there's some, there's some further studies to do on this.
Yeah, I think that the way to think about this is that the, Doug mentioned the amount, money amount, the range of money it could take. It's also a one- to a three-year grant, so I think that what would be best for everybody, I, this is my third, fourth time talking to you guys, and I feel like I have a pretty good idea, and working with Doug and talking to you, what the concerns of the town are, in that we would do this over three years, we would do another follow-up study to the initial study to answer some of these outstanding questions, like design for the fire department to be able to respond to an emergency situation, making sure that that was possible, and we've been talking with Chief Walker about that, to make sure that their concerns are heard in this process. We would look again at where a partial breach would make the most sense, a partial breach is probably going to be the most cost-effective option. So it will probably be a partial breach, but some of that's going to be the engineering, we got to do follow-up engineering to look at that, we got to look at transit.
And we'd probably have to take the head gate and do some mitigation there if we're going to be partially breached, so that it wasn't a hazard.
Correct.
The concrete tailgate.
We'd identified five issues in the feasibility report that we need to address before we go forward. So what he's talking...
There's going to be phases where we're going to do a follow-up to the feasibility report to answer all the questions, and then there'd be design and permitting and then construction. We'd like to bundle it all into one package, where we answer all the questions, we get everybody satisfied as part of this process, and then we move forward with it.
Ben, do me a favor, let Doug, I happened to be on the sidewalk today with the fire department, Doug Junior, Nathan, and Doug, and I went out with them, and it's probably Ben's and probably your conclusion or thoughts that kind of made me think a little different, and Doug, I don't think we'd be out of line in discussing that with the board, so it'd brighten their perspective a little bit of, during the spring, you're not, you get troubles anyway, because the booms are only good, I believe, for five or seven knots, and you're going to have emulsification, and you're going to go under booms, and you're not going to stop the gosh darn stuff anyway. If it's gas, it doesn't matter, because it goes away. If it's diesel or, or oil, it's going to be a problem. But you had an idea, it might have been Ben's or it might have been combined with a study, that in some ways it might be better not to have things there, so it raced to the next dam, because it doesn't have the wells there. But I mean, I thought you should illuminate, because there's, these guys are going to get questions, I'm going to get questions.
I think a response there to any spill that comes, and you've got ninety-five right there. It, in the past, there has been a car that's ended up in that impoundment. It's not out of the question to have an accident on ninety-five that impacts this area. This is a water-in, water-out type structure. So water comes in from the top, a drop of water comes in from the top, drop of water runs out at the bottom. Your response to an, an emergency over there is likely to be different, depending on what time of year it is. If it's in the springtime, this spring isn't too bad. We haven't got a lot of water rushing down through there, it's not crazy like it usually is. But there's times when that water is so crazy, if you lost something in that impoundment, I don't care what you had for booms, you're going to emulsify it in the water, and it's going to end up downstream anyways. A logical place to start, the dam leaks like a sieve right now, so trying to put something on top of the dam and potentially stopping on top of the dam, that might not be the right thing to do. Now, the next line of defense would be the Lockin Bridge. Lockin Bridge is a pretty attractive place to place a boom if the conditions are right.
Meaning slow water.
Slow water. And the other thing to consider, and these are the things that we would look at when we try to, to enhance that feasibility study, is that depending on what you dump in that river right there, you are up gradient of the Byfield wells. You might not want to stop it up gradient of the wells, you might want to let it pass by and stop it down at the Central Street Dam. So there's going to be, I think there's going to be some different options. One of the things we offered the first time around is to write a mitigation plan for the fire department over there for these different types of scenarios.
And that kind of, that enlightened me a little bit.
Yeah.
And then, if you look at it like from an aerial, you know, it's between two dams, and it's also got, what's that control structure up the way from it that funnels water through it to?
Well, there's a weir, there's a, the USGS gauge is, there's a weir that's right behind...
Is that in use now, Doug?
Yes, it is. That's a real-time, as a matter of fact, you can see the little solar panel up in the tree, that's a real-time device.
And exactly what does that do, and is that going to stay?
I think it just monitors flows, but Ben might know more.
Yeah, it monitors flows, it's one of the longer-running flow stations in the state, so it's actually a fairly valuable piece of data for USGS or anybody looking at environmental conditions. It's one of the questions that will be addressed in a follow-up, because the one question is if you remove the dam, the Larkin Dam, will that then create a fish passage barrier at the US stream gauge? We've worked on these situations with, with the USGS at a number of places, and they're very open to modifying their gauges, and they just have to redo the flow.
In the original proposal, wasn't that going to be taken out also?
That, it was not going to be taken out, it was one of the question marks of the original, of the original research report.
Of the original proposal.
Of the original, the research report that you guys did back in oh-nine, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that was one of the question marks that we're making, so it's one of these topics that we need to address with this next round of feasibility study.
So we had that, we had scour at the ninety-five bridge, so there's a little scour there now. When we drop the level of the water, it's apt to get worse, but we have to take a look at that. We have to take a look at that dog leg left, whether the river's really going to want a dog leg left, or whether it's going to continue to want to go straight. We're going to relook at the sediment in there, the sediment in there inside the impoundment is surprisingly clean. As a matter of fact, its levels were below the up dam, upstream and downstream sediment samples that we took.
You mean when they did the course?
Yes, when they did the course, that was rather odd. But it's been a while, they'll have to go in and take another couple of samples.
Now, my only thought is, and then I'm going to be quiet and let my board ask all the questions, what, it, it, tell me what it means to enter into the next round of feasibility? Does that mean accepting the whole project to enter into the next round of feasibility?
Well, the, the grant that we would ask for is a grant that would take us right through removal. But as Ben said, it would be staggered throughout a three-year period, you can ask for the money for three years. Because we're not ready, we don't have a shovel-ready project, we still have these outstanding issues. I would imagine in the first year, we'll go through that, we'll go through the, addressing these issues, maybe go through design, get into a hundred percent design, and then go out to bid and potentially go the second year. But that's, you know, that schedule is loose.
And, and just to follow up, the motive for that is because I think that, in talking to any town official, because I'm also a resident, and then, and we'll talk to you about fish passage issues, the number one issue for this town is cost with everything, and getting any external funding for just a feasibility report is not going to happen. To get external funding, we're going to need to package everything and talk about trying to get this over the finish line. So this is an opportunity to do that, where we can kind of maximize the amount of external funding we're get, we're getting to do this. I've worked with a lot of project partners to try and lower the cost of the town, lower the cost to this project. I have a fairly firm commitment from US Fish and Wildlife Service, the Parker Refuge, where they have a whole external construction team, and so they may pick up most, if not all, of the construction costs if they, if we get, when we get to that removal portion. So that's going to lower our total ask for external funds, which in turn is going to lower whatever match would happen.
And they've been doing this before, right?
Yeah.
Now, one quick question, and then I really will be quiet. Would you tell TV again, Ben, why we should even consider taking the dam out one more time, so TV really understands?
I think it's really important, first of all, Jeff, and, and Doug touched on this earlier, it's a water-in, water-out system. A lot of people, when they see a dam, they think, oh, that dam provides flood control, it's serving a purpose. A dam like that provides no flood control, it has no storage, it's a run-of-river dam. I mean, if it's an exceptionally dry summer and you have six inches of freeboard, and then you get a heavy, heavy rain, you might have a little bit of time before it comes up. But in almost all situations where you would have flooding, like in the spring, as I'm talking about most springs, you'd have like a Mother State Flood or something like that, this can provide you no flood protection. So it's a permanent dam that's not serving a purpose anymore. So from the perspective of my agency, Jeff, it's blocking diadramus fish runs. So these are fish like river herring, American eels, sea lampreys, everything else is very important to this entire great marsh ecosystem, which the town relies on to some degree. You guys read a whole list of clambers, those are people relying on the great, the great marsh, all the work you've done with the fragmities and everything else, the bird species, all the tourism money that comes here for people going out to the refuge to look at birds, this area is known for that, a lot of those birds are going to feed on river herring, they're going to feed on other animals, on eels. So it's really a big part of the ecosystem. So we want to see this dam, which has poor fish passage right now, because the dam itself is dilapidated, the fishway had a poor design, and now it's falling apart. In some, it does not make sense, with the cost estimates you guys have from the prior feasibility report, to sink more money into a failing structure. It's a liability for the town, too. So it makes more sense in this case to get external funding as much as we can, reduce liability to the town, increase fish passage is by far a more effective means for getting fish upriver than the best fishway. The fishway will work, but if it's not going to work as best, it's not having obstruction there.
I'd like to remind the board, too, that we have a statutory requirement where we own the dam to provide fish passage, and we really haven't been, Ben's been very good with us, been very patient, they've gone out there and done work on their own, but at some point, we're going to have to address that if we don't address the dam. That's likely somewhere between thirty and sixty thousand dollars to replace that. You can see it's on your drawing, it's on your drawing that shows the, the different features that are there, and it's probably somewhere around a hundred and twenty feet long. And it's somewhat dysfunctional as it is, because you need a weir, it, it starts below the base of the, of the dam, so you need a weir in place in the river to even get the fish to deflect up into this area. And then many of the trees have grown through the sides of it, your little devices that create the proper flows inside of this, this long channel are pretty much gone, most of them. So it's going to take some expensive work to get that back into shape.
Yeah.
So there'll be some money to spend there, no matter what.
Any questions, guys? Ask them now, really, kind of bore in.
I think with the grant, the sooner you get started, the better. This is free money, doesn't come along every day, and if we have to trade a little work in kind or a little money on engineering, it's going to be well spent. I'd like to see it gone.
Do you have any idea on what the cost will be to the town of Newbury?
I don't, you know, if you're talking to one, the total cost of the removal was about two seventy-five. That was put in a twenty percent contingency, and that was back in oh-nine, two thousand and ten, maybe. So, I don't.
Tim Paragon, who is with the Division of Ecological Restoration, they may do as many or more, they do the most amount of dam removals in the state and really the region. He felt that that was still an accurate estimate. He, I think he even said that if anything, it might be a little bit less, but I think that that's what we would be looking at for total cost. You know, in talking to people at NOAA who are issuing the grant, their feeling was that those five points, it's only five points, but this is going to be a competitive round, and getting as many points as you can get there might be a big deal. So I think that getting to one-to-one match, I don't think is, that's up to you guys, that would be harder, but anything you guys can put in, so you can get points there, and I mean, that's really the cost of the town, is the match.
And we can, and we can trade work in kind, correct?
So like Doug's going to write, I'm not going to write this grant, Doug is going to write this grant. You can use the hours.
Correct.
Doug is Parker River Clean Water Association, which does hours and hours of monitoring, can use this in-kind match at like twenty-two dollars an hour.
They gave us, they matched us thousands of dollars the first time.
And you're not looking for, to answer Alicia's question, probably, maybe, that it costs us a lot of money in money? It's going to be mostly matching labor?
It can be any combination that we can put together and that you see fit. So yes, if you need it, if you wanted to use town equipment out there, you can get money for town equipment if you want. My time's valuable. Sousa, anybody that works on this needs to document their time, and you get the twenty-two dollars.
James is three hundred bucks an hour, right? Don't change. Yeah, you're more.
So Doug, would you say that, that if there was to be any cost to the town, would you consider it significant?
I'm a conservation agent. You know, I, I don't, I don't know what your, your definition of significant would be, a one-to-one match is half a two seventy-five. I mean, it's, you know, it's a considerable amount of money if you're trying to, to get those five points. But I think, you know, if, if I could take the time to show you all this, which we don't have right now, that's the grant application, and there are many more points for many other things, and I think we come right to the top in many of those things, the fish runs, the, the overall benefit, the benefit downstream, so I think we can cobble this together to make a very attractive report. But like Ben... But like Ben says, that five, that, those lousy five points at the top might be very important. If, three or four years ago, when we brought this before you, there weren't too many people in line. There's a whole lot of people in line now, and they're bringing money with them, so it's a little more competitive than it was.
There will be a, a second RFP. I'm told it's gonna be in a few weeks now, I, I know, I talked to JR and Jeff, and I was told the one we're talking to you about now was supposed to be out in October.
Right.
So, who knows? But I'm told there's a second one that's gonna come out after this. And the effort would be, to prepare this grant would be largely redundant. So, if you're gonna do one, you might as well do both. And that one will, this one does not have any grant requirements to get the extra points for one-to-one. That one will have a requirement, but it's a two hu, a two-to-one federal to local. So, for every one dollar you put in, you have to put in one dollar to get two federal dollars.
But we could apply for both?
You can apply for both.
Yep.
You don't, you can, you don't have to choose one. So, I would actually say that if we're gonna apply for one...
We gotta do both.
And I'm correct in thinking that all the hours put in since '09, we can bill retroactively?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do we know this?
I don't know the answer to that either.
Can find out, yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I think what the board is driving at, too, it's very important to us, it's part of our ecosystem, is we take it very seriously. You know, we have a host of other expenses that are starting to come up, and we're pushing towards trying to put a municipal building complex in place. So, if the original premise was in place that, you know, we're gonna be looking at a lot of maintenance costs and maybe thirty to sixty thousand dollars to repair a fish ladder, if, uh, regulation enforcement was ever in place or whatever, it would be kinda nice if we were able to rise as far to the top as we could in the point system and not have a lot of cost to the town that we couldn't offset with labor.
At some point, that thing's gonna come down by itself, and it's gonna, it, it's, it's almost there now. It's leaking completely around the edges, underneath it, over the, it's leaking everywhere. And at some point, it's gonna come down, and we're gonna end up with a big mess there that we're gonna have to deal with. So, in the first couple of years, we get a sixty thousand dollar fish ladder to do, and in subsequent years, you've got some kind of cleanup that's gonna be required down there.
Yeah, that's, that's not good.
So, uh, you know, moving ahead, it doesn't make a lot of sense to ignore this.
What do you need from us tonight?
Um, I think that we need an open mind to move forward, and that's about all we need from you tonight, is that type of commitment.
Do you need a motion, or just, uh, Ben, do you feel better with a motion?
I'd love a motion, yeah. If you guys are willing to have a motion to enable Doug, with my help, to apply to these grants in support of the board, to do, carry through with them, if we get the money, then, yeah.
I would, then, we'll have a motion from someone in a second.
I make a motion to have Doug Packer, our conservation agent, pursue the grant with assistance from Ben Gehagan.
Is there a second?
To remove the Larkin Mill Dam, partially.
A second.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I am normally against this, for the simple reason, one, I'm not against the fish, but we have seven beaver dams in the river that I counted the other day when I flew over the river, okay? And I'm not sure how fish are gonna get by the beaver dam. Um, I have heard that the big fish can jump over it, I've also heard that the little fish can't get back through it, though. Um, I don't know this, uh, I'm a welder, I'm not a fish expert, okay?
But we have one here.
My other biggest concern is I had a discussion with the chairman of the Board of the Water Department in Byfield, and he's still opposed to it. So, I have problems with that, okay?
So, can, can he answer the, I wanna hear the answer about the beavers. Can you answer the question about the beavers?
Yes.
You know, uh, obviously, um, I, I'll start with the Byfield Water Board first.
The Byfield Water Board, uh, Doug has had some discussions with them, I've had discussions with them. And that, when we talk about wanting to work cooperatively with everybody and have that first phase of the grant B, working on answering all the questions, Byfield Water Board is part of that. So, trying to understand the, the hydraulics and the hydrology of the system, and understand the true impacts to their system, their pumping system, is a really big part of that first feasibility add augmentation that we wanna do. We want to get them real answers about what the dam being removed would do to their water well.
Perfect.
That's, that's what we wanna do, that's part of this project. We don't, we don't...
That makes me happy.
That's right at the top of, and we've talked about this before, so it's right at the top of our list of to-dos. Second is the beavers, um, I have recently submitted a full beaver management plan to Division of Fish and Wildlife. Uh, they are very, I mean, as everybody knows, dealing with beavers in the state is a very politically contentious issue. Uh, Division of Fish and Wildlife is largely handcuffed on what they can do. Uh, Division of Marine Fisheries has fairly wide latitude under mass general law to remove obstructions and provide passage for fish. It's the same statutes that Doug was referring to earlier, with, require landowners to provide passage to fish. Um, so, I have submitted a full beaver management plan, I am a certified trapper in the state. I am removing beavers from the river, I kind of have my hit list, I have them all up, uh, GIS. You know, if you find one, please send me the, if you can send me latlons, that's great. I'll just add it to the layer, but I probably have it in there already. Um, so, I kinda have my hit list, and I'm gonna move my way, hopefully...
I'll get Doug some pictures.
Yeah, yeah, I got a lot of pictures and...
You're naming them, you giving them names?
No.
You can't name them.
Um, so, I, I, and I actually, Byfield Water Board, uh, Water Commission has given me permission to trap on their property. Um, so, this spring, I'm just waiting to get the out-of-season trapping permission, and I'm going to be trapping the area directly downstream of Larkin Bridge, and removing that, or at least reducing that colony to a point, I don't wanna extirpate beavers from the watershed, obviously. I just wanna make it so that we can get fishing up and fish back and forth, and that, you know, there's some minimalization of threats.
Can DMF, um, remove dams?
I, yes, uh, DMF employees can remove dams from any part in the waterway if they're obstructing diadramus fish. And that is something we have done every year already, but when you remove a dam and two weeks later...
I was gonna say, they're industrious.
They're, yes, their, their reputation precedes them.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, is there any other discussion?
Well, if, if Byfield Water is concerned about this, I, I'd like them to submit something to the board so that we can read what their concerns are.
They have before.
If Byfield Water is concerned, and we're well aware that one of the wells they're using is under the influence of the river. So, we're very concerned about the Byfield Water, um, and would certainly work with them. As a matter of fact, we offered to bring DEP and, and take a look at their well system, and offer comment on, uh, on this, this application.
If that addresses their concerns, I'm happy with it, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, boy.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Nick Cracknell. Better news than the last time, Nick.
What's that?
Better news than the last time.
Well, we'll see, right?
Hi, Nick, how you doing?
I'm well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Nick Cracknell, for the record, thirteen Picard Street, Amesbury, Mass. Representing Tom Hodgson from Livingston Development in Tewksbury, Mass. Um, and representing tonight the work product from Phil Christensen from Christensen and Sergi in respect to the culvert replacement, uh, plan that I just handed out. Um, in the interest of time, I'll just give you a quick update on what we've done with your feedback from the December meeting. As you know, we were here in December to ask for some input on what our preliminary findings were in respect to our project in Georgetown. The project in Georgetown is at sixty-six Larkin Road or Parish Road, depending on which town you're in. And it's forty-two acres to the south of Larkin Road, and, um, it's owned by the De Lorenzo family. And what we're proposing through my client on the project is a so-called OSRD, open space residential subdivision design in the town of Georgetown, the entire property's in Georgetown, but the entire road frontage it sits on is in the town of, uh, Newbury. Uh, the Larkin Road culvert, in contrast to the dam, is shown here in the little orange area on the subdivision plan. The Wheeler Brook comes through underneath ninety-five to the north, and, and Jackman Brook, I guess, comes up from the, the east. And I'm not sure what the watercourse is actually called underneath this road, you can tell me if it's Jackman or Wheeler, but it goes into the Parker River.
Wheeler.
Um, so, we're proposing a ten-lot OSRD subdivision and about eleven acres along, uh, Larkin Road or Parish Road, where the previous sort of farmland that was cleared is located. There's, there's only probably third-growth vegetation in here since the, the land has not been used agriculturally. And then the bu, the back portion of the property has been fallow for a long time and is used by a lot of, um, off-road recreational vehicles. Um, most of the property is uplands, there are significant wetlands and rivercourses running through, Wheeler and Jackman. Uh, but most of the property is uplands, this is the wetland area here, wetland, this is actually the brook running through, so that we do have a perennial stream running towards, uh, the Parker River. And when we came here last time, uh, we were under the mistaken impression uh, that the closed culvert bridge over Parish Road from Newbury to Georgetown, which has been closed for a couple of years, if not more, uh, might not be proposed to be reopened. And we had the conversation with you folks in December and heard otherwise. And as a result, went back to the drawing board, and Phil Christensen from Christensen and Sergi designed a culvert designed to replace that, uh, existing condition, the existing bridge culvert that's out of commission, with a new one, that's essentially twenty feet by twenty feet, with four and a half feet of, of head underneath the, the road surface, um, for that watercourse to continue to move from south to north. And, uh, my client is proposing to finish the designs, do all the permitting, and do the installation of that culvert. And I think, uh, your Public Works Director has agreed simply to put that twenty feet of pavement on top of it when it's installed. So, that's our tentative agreement, if I've got it right from everybody. I see Jim is in the second-last row, your Public Works Director. And, um, we would just like tonight to get support, formal support from the selectmen for this design, so we can work with Jim and file whatever permits we need to file in the town of Newbury, probably the Conservation Commission, hopefully under a, a streamlined process to remove and replace the culvert. But we would like to file that as soon as possible, and then go back to the town of Georgetown and file our open space residential subdivision. And we are also filing with the Conservation Commission here for work along the edge of the road. And, uh, we're doing very minimal work that's jurisdictional in Georgetown. But we need to get our permits filed, so we can get the construction hopefully started this construction season, not next year. Meaning this summer, late summer.
James Saret, Highway Supervisor, um, can you come up and make comment? Are you, uh, fine with this? Is this gonna, this is gonna reopen the road to vehicular traffic?
Yes, yeah, be up to mass DOT specs.
Yep.
Yeah, to get the road open, it'd be nice to, to get it completed.
And you don't have any problem with the pavement when we're all good to go?
Nope, no problem at all.
And I think it's good, too.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I have one quick question, railings.
They'll be on there.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be DOT compliant.
Sorry, that's...
Fantastic, that's all, my only question.
Apologies that they're not on the plan, they will be. But, great question.
Thanks, James. Do I have a motion to, um, fulfill, Nick, what's your, phrase your question to us that you would like fulfill?
Um, I'd like formal support for the proposed, uh, culvert design for Lark, Larkin Road, right? Larkin? Um, as proposed and submitted on this date to the Board of Selectmen.
And I would take a motion.
Yeah, a motion to support it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Can I, can I just ask for an amendment to that? I think it would make sense that you be a co-applicant with us, because we're probably a co-applicant with you, to go to your Conservation Commission for your culvert.
James, are you set with that?
Right?
Honestly, I don't have a great answer for that, because I don't do, I've never, don't do the conservation permitting if that would help.
It's your, your culvert, I think we need you to be a co-applicant.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
So, is this gonna come to any cost to town of Newbury, anything at all, to do this?
Just the paving of the twenty by twenty.
Right, which we were gonna do anyway.
And Ginny shaking her head, yes, right?
See, if it's a town's land, with the work that's gonna be done on it, you would have to be...
The co-applicant, and we'd need any temporary construction easements that, that we can work out with the legal department as a third component of that vote, just so it's all-inclusive.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm the legal department.
Thank you. Did I miss anything?
That's town council.
Chief cook and bottle washer.
Yep. All right, so, any, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
I should've known from the three hundred dollars an hour, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James, thanks for all that.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks, guys. You wouldn't have to work.
You'd have somebody else here.
Yeah, that would be all you'd have to do.
This is very good news.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, very good.
You and Kim, we need more of that.
Yeah. Well, like you said, we dedicated him in the beginning, so it's good. We have, uh, monthly Saturday Selectmen coffee meetings. We would be looking for a discussion very quickly on an assessment of their worthiness and the decision whether to continue or not. So, I'll open it up to the board.
Chuck, how was your coffee session this past Saturday morning?
Excellent. Um, it was, I consider it well-attended, there were six, uh, people there. Um, majority of the discussion was the parking lot at Plum Island, but there was other discussions about the dump and access to the beach, so...
Anything about the municipal building?
Not a thing. Not one question about that. And as I said, it was, it was, uh, everybody behaved very, very well, drank a lot of coffee, and, uh, you know, good time was had by all, so I would vote to continue this.
I liked them myself.
JR?
I'll take it either way.
Okay.
We're gonna advertise yours next.
Okay.
So, you get more people.
I'm ambiguous, so, uh, as long as mine doesn't fall in a nice...
You're ambivalent, you're not ambiguous.
Well, I could be ambiguous, too. I'm just trying to do the months, and I think mine's on a Saturday in, uh, you know, July.
Well, we, we can...
Maybe suspend for the summer.
We can work it out, yeah, we might wanna suspend for the summer.
You know what?
Do we need that in the form of a motion? No, we don't, do we?
Yeah.
We do?
To do what?
All right.
I move that we continue our Saturday coffee hours.
First Saturday of the month.
For the, of the first Saturday of the month, for the next five Saturdays. Rotating schedules.
That, uh, kinda puts us through summer, too, doesn't it? Don't we usually, um, take a little time off on summer?
You didn't hear what was going on, I think, that we, we had that discussion quick, do we kind of suspend for the summer?
Hmm.
So...
So, the next five Saturdays, five months would be...
Summer.
What do, where are we now, March?
April.
So, it'd be April, May, June. And then we'll skip July and August.
Can we get down to one Selectmen's meeting every month through the summer?
Can, if it's not too busy.
My only issue is, um, August and September, my days can get blown up. Yep. Beyond belief. So, if I can fit in...
We'll do you in April, you can be first, the first one.
Yeah, whatever works. Okay.
I mean, I think we're very accommodating of each other's schedules, we try to be, anyways.
Yeah, but those are my two months that something might happen, so I'd rather not. Yep.
Why don't we make a motion that when we go down to one Selectmen's meeting in the summer, we suspend the, uh, annual Selectmen's Coffee?
I like that.
Can you amend? Can you amend?
Yeah, amend it to, uh, take a break through the summer.
Is, and relevant to when we suspend, uh, normal Selectmen's meetings, so...
Yep.
Is that a motion, do I have a second?
Second, oh, I made the motion, you get a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? It's totally clear.
Like mud.
All those in favor?
She's got it.
Thank you for putting up with us, Ellen.
I think Ginny's moving around out there like... Any citizens' concerns? Do we have any...
Did we vote on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any correspondence? Uh, I'd like a motion, uh, to accept the minutes, as read, have everyone read them?
Yep, motion to accept the minutes as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have warrants, um, Ellen?[1755.81]
Yes, you do.
Motion to sign warrants.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any meeting updates?
Yeah, I do. We had a Veterans Administration meeting Thursday last. We met the new hired assistant, Tracy Brown. Very friendly, very knowledgeable. We overviewed the Chapter 115 Process redesign, which is state and federal money going to veterans. We had, it says audit completed here, but it really wasn't a true audit. It was merely a review of the books. But an audit company did go over them, and we have a considerable amount of money in there.